We'll call our meeting to order today. This is our first formal meeting of 2021. I'm grateful to be able to look back at the 2020, the perfect 2020 hindsight. And look forward to that coming here. Ms. Woods, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Clausen?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Upchurch?
Here.
Thank you. To view the livestream video of this meeting, please go to Lewis Palmer School District 38 YouTube page at the, on the Lewis Palmer. It's on the youtube.com/ user/ LPSD community. Let's begin today with a pledge of allegiance. Would you be willing to lead us in that?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is our, our first work session of the year. Item C1 is, is an introduction of owners' representatives for our Grace Best Facility Master Plan. And Dr. Summers, if you could introduce this group and your background information, that would be great.
Be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Good morning, board. Good morning, audience. And we're very pleased to be here with the issue of our Grace Best Owners Rep and our process of where we're going here as far as next steps. So I just want to give a few statements of background to help reset and re-ground us all on where we have been in this process and where we're going from here. So I see your call. In our October 6th work session, district leadership provided a detailed overview of the current physical state of Grace Best Educational Facility and Complex, including related information on the value, expenses, and cost to extend the useful life of this facility. We also facilitated the discussion on the set of questions and considerations to help inform our next steps. And very briefly, we acknowledged some of the following considerations. First, we acknowledge the current use of this asset, including value additive programs and learning services for our students, including, but not limited to, a highly innovative and successful homeschool enrichment program serving over 125 students on a weekly basis, high school transitions programming, which serves about 15-plus students on a daily basis, very successful partnership with Fairbotics and Monumental Impact, which enables and supports the growing talent and passion of high school students in technology, engineering, and entrepreneurship with experiences and community. We also acknowledge that we have an aging district asset with significant site deficiencies that currently restrict our ability to optimize the use of this site, that we have various opportunities which could expand and enrich current programming efforts, while also anticipating and meeting the need for other innovative programs, as well as learning services to meet the future needs of our students. We acknowledge the fundamental need to engage our community in understanding these challenges and opportunities, and also leveraging their input to help formulate recommendations about how Grace Best may function as a renovated and flexible site. We also acknowledge that the future direction of Grace Best is part of a bigger piece of the puzzle and larger conversation about future growth in our community, and again, the potential learning needs of all of our students. So as a reminder, we do have a variety of different options, really all options that are currently still on the table, including the potential sale of the property, as well as a status quo use. But I think through our conversations, we all acknowledge that we generally favor a process that could allow us to optimize the use of this facility through either a small to large-scale rehabilitation and renovation, which will fundamentally allow for flexible learning spaces into the future. So given the complexities and nuances of this type of project, we believe that the procurement of an owners' rep was essential for our district to engage in a quality process that would yield a successful outcome. Just a little background there. Our primary criteria in the search of that firm was to examine prior experience in working with school districts, knowledge of construction management, particularly in the area of rehab of an older building and the associated complexities, the ability to foster strong public engagement, as well as just the firm's overall philosophy and approach to creating a strong partnership among our district leadership team, as well as all of our community stakeholders, with a focus on successful outcomes for all of our kids. We had 12 firms submit applications. We hosted two half-day interviews in late December, and we ultimately landed a joint venture partnership with the Answer Advisory and Cooperative Strategies firm. And so I'm very pleased to introduce representatives from Answer and Cooperative Strategies here before us today. And I'm going to let them do the introductions themselves, but I'm very pleased to welcome them here. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Kirk Connolly.
Thank you, Dr. Summers. I'm Kirk Connolly with the Denver office of Answer Advisory. We're a national-level firm that has joined with Cooperative Strategies, both for this project and nationwide. What, what works well for a project like the Grace Best Facilities, we found, is Cooperative Strategies are experts at facility master planning, utilization of facilities, especially educational-oriented facilities, as well as master planning. Our core competency at Answer is project management, facility development, and construction project management. So it's a great team. We've worked together on, on other projects, and we're very, very excited to be able to help the Lewis Palmer School District figure out the future of the Grace Best Facility. At that, I'll hand it to Kevin Huber, who is in charge of the Colorado office of Cooperative Strategies.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us today. We're happy to be here. You guys definitely have a, a unique project, which is just more than hiring an owners' rep, which this, that's why this project fit really well for us. Cooperative Strategies is a national K-12 planning for strictly public K-12 sector. We've done plans like this in over 2,000 school districts nationwide, including full statewide facility master plans, down to single-school projects like what we're working on here. And like Kirk mentioned, we've teamed up with them on other planning and owners' rep projects. We really complement each other. I've known Kirk for a very long time. So good relationship there. We're really excited to be here. And as we go through the presentation today, we really want this to be more of a conversation. So please ask any questions, any thoughts, anything that's going on. We'll keep it pretty high level for today. And just a few other people on here. We have Maribel, who works with Answer. She's going to be helping us with the administrative side, budget control. Caroline's going to be helping with marketing and communications. And then Sebastian in my office will be assisting Kirk with the owners' rep side of this. And with that, I'll hand it over to Susan Miller.
Great. Thank you very much. Good morning. It's wonderful to be here, and it's nice to see people face to face. Actually, instead, we zoom windows and pictures. So just a quick overview of what we're going to be talking about. We'll look at the time and the process, as well as timelines, the guiding principles that will drive the conversation and the work, and then the effort to keep as much transparency and communication going with the community, because we find that sometimes people can't make it to certain meetings, or they feel that they don't have access to the same information as somebody else has. So the whole idea is to be able to make sure that people have the same information at the ready, at their fingertips. And so we'll, we'll touch on that when we, when we kind of close up the conversation. So real quickly, we can go to the overview and process, please. The concept is incorporating the leadership of the team or the leadership of the district, along with the steering committee, which is community-driven, along with then also the meetings that take place with the community. So let's touch first on the district leadership. As Casey mentioned, Dr. Summers mentioned, that they went out and they looked for a team that was going to be helping to facilitate the work that you all had aspired to have done for the Grace Best project. The drivers are to create options, to create opportunities and discussion, so that it can be a robust conversation within, in the community. And the idea is also to be, ensure that we're engaging with the board to make sure we're on track with where you all want us to be walking. The steering committee is made up of a group of individuals that will invest their time for about four meetings, one and a half to two hours of those four meetings, to talk through, one, what the facility actually is at this time and what it's looking like in terms of need, the facility condition, the, what exactly what Dr. Summers was alluding to earlier, what currently is in the facility and what could be. And ideally, the outreach to the steering committee, we're asking people to be involved from teachers and parents and students and other members of the community that are just vested and interested in what is going to be happening. And those 15 to 20 people will become kind of the core group that's going to be working with Dr. Summers and with us and his team to put a formula together to bring back to you all in a number of months with recommendations. And then the community meetings, those are the critical ones as well, where we reach out to the community, have either, depending on where we are with the pandemic, either via Zoom conversations or WebEx conversations or in-person. It's just kind of going to have to evolve and figure out how we all are going to navigate that. But it's critical that the community has a conversation. Ideally, some of the steering committee members will be there, so they can talk about the process that we're going through. We'll also have a survey that goes out to the community to talk about the, what we formulate, some of the options, where people's support lies in terms of which option they favor, ranking one, two, three, or whatever that might look like. But that way, there is a constant communication taking place between the steering committee, the community, and the district. So that's how we're tying it all together. The schedule is pretty, pretty tight. We have already started to collect the information that's been provided to us about the building. We're talking with you all today. We're reaching out for steering committee members, and that, I believe, this is what, I'm not exactly sure what the date is that we're sending it out, but it should be going out right after this board meeting.
We're actually targeting distribution starting this afternoon.
Awesome. Great. That's what, that's what Julie had mentioned. So we'll put the ask out for the steering committee with applications that come back in. There will be, you know, identifying, you don't want just all, all students. You don't want just all teachers. You don't want just all parents. So there'll be an evaluation of the mix, so that we have a robust group to work with. And then we will talk with Dr. Summers and his team about their priorities, and then we'll start to move into the more challenging work, which is starting to talk about priorities and survey work. So that by the time we get through to April, we should be pretty close to having draft of various options that have been vetted and that the steering committee, as well as the executive committee, executive team can coalesce around. And then we'll bring it back to the board for a final review with you all in May, and then the final board presentation and action to take place in the middle of May. So it's a pretty tight schedule, but I think we're going to be able to get the work done. And the steering committee is that critical part, that they're, they're the driver as well. They kind of keep everybody moving forward. So first, I can just start that for you. Do you want to go to the next page?
Can I ask Dr. Summers a question?
Sure.
So I see the schedule. Do you anticipate with the final board presentation in May, either the work session or the public regular meeting, still having a master, a facility master plan that's flexible? Or will it be more focused on a particular outcome?
I think that's an excellent question. We are prepared through our process to address flexibility throughout. I think one of the, and please speak to this if you'd like, opportunities that we have in determining the viability of what options are on the table will be presented to you in a format that allows for a vetting process to occur, so that what we're bringing will more than likely be a set of different options within a larger recommendation that will prioritize the flexibility of that learning space, but essentially give us different pathways toward that eventual outcome.
So I'm just, so I'm clear. By our regular board meeting in May, we will have a facility master plan that will have considered various options that I think will be prioritized as to best use, given the circumstances of our school district.
Correct. Right. So that, that when we come to you, the steering committee, as well as the executive team, will say, board of directors, this is what we believe is the best utilization or use of the building, and this is what we envision that building can be providing for the community in terms of opportunities, learning slash partnerships, whatever that might look like.
Could you elaborate just a bit on this application process that you mentioned and the steering committee?
Sure. So when we, when we put together steering committees for a facility master plan, we suggest to communities to think about who their partners are in the community that would want to be engaged with the process. And that can be anywhere from, you know, some large, large districts, you might have a large employer who has a significant vested interest in the future of, of the master plan. In this community, for example, we know that there are organizations that are already a part of the facility, that use the facility, so they may be, may want to have a voice in that. We believe students should always have a voice, because they're the ones that actually are using these facilities, and they're the ones that walk in and on them every day, as well as parents, because they're the ones that are vested to make sure that their students and children have great opportunities, and teachers. And then potentially, if there's a, a, you know, a community member that were community members, economic development, whoever might actually be interested in what the actual work is going to be for developing this facility's master plan. Sometimes we have developers join us. So what, what we're proposing is, Dr. Summers and his team have a draft of an ask, of a letter that's asking people to engage, and I believe that will go out. And I'm not exactly sure how Julie puts that out to her community, but I'm sure there's some type of a loop or a community outreach effort. It can go up on Facebook pages. It can go up on Twitter accounts, and people can send that out. And there'll be a link for people to apply, and they fill out the application. And it talks about, you know, are you invested in, you know, working as a group collaboratively and in partnership with the district? Because you want people that are actually going to want to be engaged with other people. And so there'll be a selection process. I'm not exactly sure how Dr. Summers and his team are going to evaluate, but, you know, they have the people that they're looking for. So if they want two students, you know, ideally, we have a number of students that apply, and we choose two students. And then that should come to, I guess, in a few weeks, by the end of January, ideally, that we would have that group of 15 to 20 people, and that will be the steering committee.
Okay. Thank you. 15 to 20 people is the size of this committee. So it's going to be open publicly to apply, to participate, which is good. But at the end of the day, it's 15 to 20 that you will have, so it's workable.
Right.
Okay.
And then the steering, that steering committee, through those different dates, you know, February, March, and April, you know, those groups will, the 20 will meet certainly together, but we break into small groups, so that there's dialogue that takes place. So it's not just maybe one person dominating. Sometimes conversations can take that avenue. In this way, if we have smaller groups, ideally, we're allowing a more robust conversation.
Very good. Any other questions from the board?
My one question would be that we, with that committee, I guess I would have a request that that committee include members of the robotics team or in our transition program in our homeschool mission. Individuals that use that building every day, pretty much.
We have already factored that into our criteria that we're looking for. And then Susan, the only other thing I would add is that we also will be inviting and looking for one board representative who would be able to also serve on the steering committee as a member.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one thought, if I may take a half a step back and take a macro view of this for a moment, more for the team of the board and our constituents and the staff than for the owners' rep team. Dr. Summers mentions part of the vetting process. When the board got together a year ago, we all concur that it's very important to look at the entire pool of assets in the district and to ensure that the students, the staff, constituents, we're getting the maximum return on those assets from an academic and educational experience standpoint. This is one component of that. And to Dr. Summers' point, whatever the conclusion is of this particular process does not commit the district to go in a certain direction or, or decide on an asset in that particular direction. It merely gives us the diligence to make a very educated and well-thought-out decision from there. Is that approximately stated correctly?
It does. If I could echo that, Mr. Taylor, I think you brought up this topic in a previous conversation as well. The goal of this committee is not to tell us exactly how we're going to use it, but what can it be used for? Give us flexible options to consider. Ultimately, the decision will rest with the board in terms of what we need to do moving forward. But we also envision that what we may start with over the first, let's say, three to five years of implementation may also pivot and evolve over time. So with that in mind, that flexible and agile use of a asset that right now we're not getting maximum value from is what's of most concern, I think, to this governing team. Mr. Taylor, is that inaccurate?
That's perfect. Good question. Matt or Teresa, do you guys have any questions at this point?
Not at this point, no.
No questions at this point, Chris. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Let's continue then. Thank you.
So, so basically, talking about, you know, the process that we're working through, we are going to establish a committee, which we've already touched on, and who is going to be a part of that. We collect the data and background information. We've already started to collect the information on the building itself. We also then start to take that information and think about, okay, how is it to align with the guidelines and the strategic plan that you all have put forward as a board, as well as how the executive team is navigating that. We will then work also with the community. As I said, it's, it's an iterative process. There's work that's done, survey work that's extended, collected, and brought back to the steering committee, and then brought back to the community. So it is a very iterative, engaging process. So that by the time that we, we are able to bring forward to you the plan and the outline of the plan, we will have a thorough analysis, as well as weighing it against the pros and cons within your community and how it aligns with your objectives and guidelines moving forward for the education of your students. And how that facility, as you said, I think you commented earlier, Mr. Schwartz, how that's going to be leveraged for the benefit of your students. Moving along. This is a comprehensive timeline in terms of putting together a master plan, moving forward with the development of that plan, and how actually it can be enacted. And this takes you all the way through the design phase to final approval. If we face making a decision, if you decide to move forward with some type of a project that requires renovation, rebuild, et cetera, there's a timeline in front of you that you can see is viable within a year and a half.
I just wanted to note, this is what we submitted as our assumption with our proposal. You can see the dates changed a little bit, how we're looking for final approval into May. So this will be, some of these dates will be shifting. They're not set in stone, but just to give you an idea.
And then the next, moving on. So what actually drives the decision and how do you frame it? Well, certainly, most importantly, it promotes equity, meaning that the physical plant and the upgrades to that plant are going to provide a great learning environment for the students that are in that facility and have a community use. It's data-driven. It's not done by, I feel like this is the best idea. The objective is to be data-driven, so that the community has a full understanding of what can and cannot be realized with that facility, as well as costs associated with the aspirations for that facility. Certainly, the community engagement is critical, because they're the ones that are going to be using that facility. It may need to have the word and or the say and the recommendations that are developed. We want transparency. One of the criticisms, I think, sometimes is, you know, we never have enough information. We want to make sure that people don't feel that they don't have access to the same information that the board has in making decisions. So that's critical in terms of being able to have the community know exactly where they can find information about how the process is working, and that they have the same detail that the steering committee has and the board has. And then finally, any of the options that we promote or bring forward with the steering committee's work, that it doesn't, the option is an improvement to what is being provided in that facility now. That it's a step up, that it's a, it's a lift, shall we say. And so that any of those options that we bring forward and discuss with the steering committee and then bring forward to the board, all of those will be value-add to this facility for the students and the community, individuals that use that facility. And I think, Mrs. Capsher, I think Dr. Summers basically said, you know, the plan will be community-driven to ensure that the improved learning, there's an improved learning environment for all students. And I think that's the driver of him and his staff when they were running through this, these guiding principles. And I think the last page, Kevin, is the communication effort.
Do you guys have any questions on that?
Did I hear a question on the phone?
Yeah. So I'm on the slide that says Grace Best Facility and Guiding Principles. And Susan, I think it's you speaking. And you're mentioning, or you're talking about how the process is data-driven. Can you speak a little more specifically to what kind of data that is and how do you ensure that that data is incorporated in the MAF?
Sure. So we have building-specific data, right? Exactly how the build, the condition of the building and its, its needs. For example, what systems within the building need to be upgraded and improved, what the, what the standing is of the building, but also being able to look at the utilization of the building. I think it was mentioned earlier, there's a number of different programs that are afforded the opportunity to use this facility. And so understanding exactly how those, those community, or those organizations use this building and, and are they, is it being utilized to a tight level of capacity? So those are the conversations that would be discussed with the steering committee. Because certainly, you know, some buildings, for example, what happens if you want to keep it open a longer time? You know, can we offer it open to other, other organizations within the community to have it utilized more effectively? Are there partnerships that we could have within the community of other community organizations that might be interested in a part of the building that if it was upgraded to a certain standard, they would be able to use it as well? So those are the type of conversations that we would be having that would be data-driven. And adequacy.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry. And educational adequacy, just in general. What is the, what is the standard of the facility right now and how's it serving its, its community?
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely. So when we were talking about community, communication, we talked with Dr. Summers and his team about setting up a, kind of a window, so to speak, or, or a space on the district's website, which would be basically the facility master plan focus. It would be a tab, or it would be a link, however your team sets it up, Dr. Summers. It will have the overview of the project. It has the timelines. We'll have a frequently asked questions, because you know, some questions just keep bubbling up about the process, so that will be included glossary of terms. Oftentimes, we keep using terms like an FCI or utilization or capacity, being able to explain to people what those actual terms are and how they relate to the facility plan. We'll have that up for the community as well. Also, a timeline or the work that is completed to date and, and moving forward, where are we going from here? We'll have access to all of the, as I said earlier, the documentation that the steering committee has access to and that Dr. Summers and his staff have access to, so that, as I said before, anybody can kind of be able to follow along. If they can't be a part of a steering committee per se, they can certainly have access to the same documentation that the steering committee is using. And then being able to have, you know, questions answered. They'll be able to address questions. They send in a, you know, a question about a documentation or any of the work that we're doing. And then ideally, the deliverable that we bring to the board in And then ideally, the deliverable that we bring to the board in May will align with where Dr. Summers and his team in conjunction with the work that you all are doing, being able to bring a project and/or options available for discussion for moving forward with the facility.
I think all I wanted to add was, this has been a great tool. We're working in D11 right now, doing a district-wide facility master plan with them. And we have a steering committee of 65 people down there. And so a lot of people engaged. We've been hosting Zoom meetings. If we can't do in-person, we would assume to do that here. We're recording the meetings, we're posting them online as well, so people need to go back and watch those. Also, if the community wants to be involved, they'll have all that information when they come into the community meeting. So this has been a great tool, even during COVID, to help us out with this process and get more engagement.
All right. When I look at the, there we go, on the community engagement piece, I think what would be helpful in mitigating with some of those, where can I find the information, is if it's on our front page, where we have like our picture where it's right there, there's no question about how do I find this information? It's user-friendly.
Absolutely. We'll make sure that it's easily accessible for all.
I think that was Julie's intent in terms of how we make sure that it's sticky at this point. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question that is mostly for our board members, though. Where do you see this master plan development residing in our goals? You know, obviously, there's a cost associated with it, but I don't see that driving this process. So I'm thinking of the steering committee and, you know, our goal of communication, our goal of, you know, a good school environment, healthy school environment, staff development. Where do you guys see this particular project fitting? Primarily because it touches everything, but I'm actually, it's kind of opening the doors of which board member might participate.
So personally, I see this fitting into, honestly, I see it fitting into all five goals because I think it speaks to collaborating and engaging with our community. I think it speaks to our larger master plan of our facilities and our safety. Obviously, there's budget involved in this, and it also ties into how does this support our teachers and our staff and how does this support our students in the learning environment in the bigger picture? And when I look at this, I also think that this should be something that is flexible and sustainable and defendable to our community and as we are moving forward, that this is something that our entire community can understand and our students, that it has to benefit our students first and foremost, and it has to be something that we are maximizing our utilization. And it's an over bigger picture instead of just a semester-by-semester decision. This is something that should fit into what do we see years down the road on how this fits into our district as a whole? So I see this as a, in all of our goals, when we're looking at our goals, we should be looking at that of how does, how do our rocks and how do our, when we're checking the box, it shouldn't just be a check the box, we've done this. It should be, we're checking the box because of, so we can answer the why and the so what of what we're doing.
I agree, big picture. I was trying to narrow it down to which board member might be on the steering committee. Ron?
Would you like us to volunteer some of our peers?
No, actually, you know, we should be able to do it in our own minds. You know, me being a CPA, for example, I think budgets, everything, so I didn't see me participating, but I just don't see that this should be a budget materially-driven exercise. I think this is more big picture than simple budget.
I wonder if maybe there's somebody that has a good ear to the staff as well as understanding of the opportunity in front of us to build a 21st century facility with an eye towards safety and security and modern learning techniques and opportunities. And someone who has a passion for that and the time flexibility to interact well with the community might be a nice fit.
Excellent. Matt, do you have any thoughts around this?
No, I don't. I concur with your assessment that it kind of overlaps all five goals. So I think it's really a question of which board member would like to be involved in this process.
Very good. Teresa?
I concur. It covers all five goals, foresighting what's seen in most frequently or most recently, communication, safety and security. There's no doubt it fits into that. I'd be glad to work on it if, you know, if no one else is able or has time. I know we're all, it's all different circumstances right now, so I don't know if that's something that needs to be determined today or do we have some flexibility on time and determining?
I think we have time. That's, I don't think we need that today, but I'm going to tell you all right now that this timeframe is not good for me. It's my busiest time of my year, work-wise, so it's not a good time. But I will be involved through the board, but, you know, so it'll be up to, and if there's any others who know they can't do it, now's a good time to speak up. But otherwise, should the board members do the same application process, Dr. Summers?
I would encourage that. I think that supports the process that we have for all members of our community. And I'm certainly available to answer any further questions and make sure we can go into deeper detail before that decision is made.
Do you all agree with that? If you're interested in doing this, then you should just do the formal application process along with the rest of the committee. I think that's a great approach.
And it's very straightforward, so we promise it's not going to be that intensive. However, we will be assessing for completeness and accuracy throughout the process.
And consistency.
Yes. Indeed.
Sorry.
So I imagine there's a few of us that would find this to be a, would like to be involved in the process. So I think having us each engage is a good idea. Sure, a cup of coffee.
Well, let's leave it at that. I need to connect with two more board members, but let's leave it at it's an application process.
That's fair.
Father, Father, can you help me?
Yeah, is Matt there?
Eric, Sam, Scott.
The school board?
Oh, I just want to.
While we're waiting to link back up, just a quick FYI for our board. And then we're getting different communication. We are having a hard time with the live stream. We think there is an inherent Google issue that we're navigating right now. So what is happening, I believe, is we're still recording everything. Presentation should be made public as soon as it's able to be released. In the meantime, we are recording, so I just want to make sure that you all know, unfortunately, we're having some 2021 glitches that we're navigating through right now.
Mine's definitely running slow as well.
Teresa, you there?
Hi, yeah. In your name.
Yes, and Matt, are you there now?
I am, thank you.
Awesome. Sorry about that. While you were out, Dr. Summers was explaining that we're having technology glitches on our streaming too, so it may have just been an internet bug, but welcome back.
So Matt, I'm actually on the line at the moment, but can I go ahead and make a message?
He's actually on the call now, so.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and hang up, and I hope I don't hit the line.
Thank you. Matt, are you there?
I am, thank you. For any reason, it's too late to get off right now.
Okay, thank you.
So I have one question for the team. Can you share, did you have any insights or experiences up here in D38 within our community of Monument?
And before we go there, I just want to make sure that all the board members heard what we agreed to. So Matt and Teresa, we talked internally about who to participate here. I think the conclusion is, is that we're all free to go through the same application process as any other committee members, and so that application will be available on the school district website. I noted that I can't participate during this timeframe, but any of you who want to participate, just feel free to do the application process like any other committee member would do. All right?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry about that.
I was just asking what familiarity the team has with up here in D38 in northern El Paso County.
Well, I can take that one. I headed up the, I was owner's rep and headed up the development team for the Monument Academy new facility and worked with a couple of entities that wanted to be involved with the project. Ultimately, they weren't, but we did take them. The why was one of the initial partners who wanted to be involved. The rest of the project was just us coordinating with the developer, the purchase of the raw land and the development of the facility. I don't have any specific ties to D38, just friends and family in your surrounding area. Grew up in Colorado, I'm in Lincoln, Arizona. Worked with lots of the local architects and contractors in this area as well.
And I do not, but I'm Colorado. And candidly, that is why the steering committee is so critical, is because you do want the community that's going to be the beneficiaries of the facility to do a lot of the heavy lifting and the work. So we're mainly facilitators for it. We're not the ones that are telling how it's going to evolve. We let the steering committee drive that work.
Right, and we view our community as our owners and we want that those can.
Exactly, exactly. So that's, that is why the steering committee is such a critical component of the work that we do, is because it is their work. We are mere facilitators in that space.
Matt, do you have any other questions for this introduction of the owner's reps? Or Teresa?
I don't. It's agreement.
Anything else? If not, just to conclude, we approved this process outcome. Is that sound right?
Yes, sir.
And you've now gone through the process of vetting options, and this was your, this is the selection now. So this is our introduction to the team that has been contracted now to run through this exercise over the next almost five months. And it's nice to meet you. We appreciate your presentation. The overview that you've shared today looks thorough as you've answered all of our questions. You've already learned a lot, it sounds like to me, so you've already hit the ground running, and we appreciate what you will be doing for our school system.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Excited to get started, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we're clear that this is, as we're doing this process, this isn't a hey, homeschool Richmond Academy or transition to robotics, find a new home. We're not there at, that's not what this is at all. I just want to make sure that folks understand in case there's a little bit of anxiety that starts to double up, that this is the beginning of a process of finding out a way to make sure that all of our assets align with our goals and serve our students and our district and our stakeholders to the best of its ability and that we're making sure that there's a fit for everyone. Nobody will be left out.
Absolutely. And what you're bringing up this up church, I think, is really important as we're setting the stage, moving into the development, formation and implementation of the steering committee will be very deliberate about exactly what you just said with more context even around them to support how those discussions will take place so that that can clear up any potential worry, confusion, et cetera, along the way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item is a preview of the board adjustments leading up to our regular session where we will approve the final budget for 2020, 2021. And Ms. Shana Sealy will present some adjustments that will prepare us and we can talk about in preparation for our regular meeting on January 25th.
Is this my microphone? Got it, okay. All right, so hopefully this will be fairly straightforward. So what I did was I started with the proposed reserves needed that we had originally talked about back in October, November timeframe. You are probably aware that the state share has been reduced by $64.04 per student. And so you will see that variance that's going to adjust our budget. That also, we also went through and adjusted the charter school services provided to Monument Academy based on Exhibit E as it relates to their contract, which is what we do after October count every year. And so you'll see that total reduction in revenue of $277,000. If you go down to the transfers.
Were we leaving? I wasn't aware of the adjustment. I guess I had my head in this, but is there some sort of that came out on the PPR, right?
Yes.
I wasn't aware that it was reduced.
It is.
When was it reduced?
When? I believe right before Christmas break in December is when that information came out.
Right before the, sorry, right before the second distribution, right?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that represents a little bit less than 1% of the PPR.
Correct.
$64,007,000 has changed.
Correct. So.
And just a quick interject, we were not aware either until we were told.
Correct.
No, I understand, I just, she, as soon as we knew, and I.
Yes, I apologize. I did assume that you knew.
So Shayna, what does that bring our total PPR to? Per student, not total, but per student.
Per student is 75. I knew you were going to ask me the one thing that I didn't have in front of me. 75 and some change. Let me find that, hold on.
We should make that pretty public because there's been times when we're asked questions like about what is that amount? And I couldn't find it through our meeting minutes. Did you ever find it?
No, I reached out and asked. It is $7,597 and some change, so rounded to 7598 versus 7662 previously.
Seven, five, ninety?
Correct.
And just so that we're clear on net dollars to the district versus these goes in us and goes out of us, is that pre or post-budget stabilization factor reduction?
That is after.
So that's real cash?
Correct.
You can use to operate? Perfect, thank you.
Yes. Okay, so transfers, we had an adjustment to the cap reserve transfer that I failed to draw your attention to last time around. And also, the MA allocation of the MLO as well as the state share allocation to Monument Academy are also receiving an adjustment, and that is related to both student October count as well as the PPR difference. Any questions on that little section?
I do, on the MA state share allocation. The October adjusted budget had the October count, correct?
It had, we did not have their finalized FTE.
You were using estimate.
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
Correct. Anything else on that?
So can I make sure I understand? So just following along Chris's line, the MA state share allocation. So in October, we budgeted that it would be an allocation of 7,000, or 7, 7,508.
Correct.
Seven point five million. Yeah. And then, but in reality, in January, the allocation was 7,200 and some change.
Correct.
Okay. For a difference, there it is, I see. Okay, just.
Yep. No, you're right.
There's two parts there. One is the actual October headcount changed slightly. So it wasn't a thousand even, it was something else. And then the reduction in the net PPR. So it's volume and.
Correct, yes.
Cost.
Yes.
So it represents probably 39 or 40 students. If you divide it by the.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yes, we were working off of their, their projection of, I believe, 980 students and they came in at about, their FTE was about 948, if I remember correctly off the top of my head. So those adjustments, and I have verified all of these calculations, I always verify those with their finance director, Mark, and got confirmation of that yesterday. So these numbers should not change for the rest of the year, barring any large changes between MA enrollment and the district enrollment.
Well, we're stuck, don't we use the enrollment from October? So there's no more adjustments for.
There is by contract, if we have more than five students transfer between the two, do adjust.
Between the county and the district.
Correct. Yep, so there could possibly be a third adjustment, but that's, that's a contractual thing between us and Monument Academy. And then we have some expenditure adjustments that are needed, just based on actuals, where we're looking at going forward extrapolating out the rest of the year. The one that I would really like to draw attention to is that one-time compensation action, where we had budgeted 900,000. That number came in quite a bit less, at 713,000. And so that definitely has helped absorb some of that PPR rescission difference.
Shayna, can you explain why that came in at an out lower?
Because when I came up with the number 900,000, I always tried to way over project so that we are covered in the case of something that I'm not thinking of happening. And so I'd much rather under promise and over deliver.
Can I add to that as well?
Yes.
In light of the fact that not every employee was compensated at the full $1,000 action, we had a proportionate rate. So for some of our staff that were not counted at the full-time equivalent status of a 1.0, for example, a halftime staff member who's only working 50% of the work week, they only earn $500 as opposed to the full 1,000. So that was part of the agreement that was approved by the board. So in addition to what Shayna just mentioned, it just bears out, based on the unique positions that our employees occupy, that it wasn't a set $1,000 across the board.
And you mentioned these assumptions in your estimate in December when we approved that, I recall this discussion about it's not a flat amount for everyone, it's just an estimate, and that was conservative, so.
Correct, yes. And then we had some slight differences to the CARES allocations as well as the SIR allocations, once those numbers were finalized out. And so that leads us down to a calculation of the reserves needed regarding this flexible budget of about 1.686. So that's kind of where.
What was it in most recent?
So at the top, you will see it was detailed out at 1.579, but when I presented back in October, November timeframe, it was a $1.6 million estimate based on that. So we are still within, we're still pretty close.
But it keeps creeping higher.
Keeps creeping a little bit higher, yes. But given the rescission of $64 per student, I would say that that is, the creeping higher is pretty minimal. If you were to do a flat, you know, $64 times about 6,000 students.
So what you're telling me is not creeping higher, meaning expenditures, it's creeping lower, meaning receipts, right?
Correct.
Kind of thing.
So, yes. So barring anything happening between now and January 25th, I foresee this being our proposed budget adjustments going before the board.
So will we see a complete budget?
Yes.
Not just the one-page summary?
Yes, if you would like to see all the pages of the budget, I will be happy to make that available to you.
And it should be made public once it's been approved.
Correct, yes. So I will have all of that, it's actually ready. This just is a summary for you.
Understood.
So, and if you look through it in more detail and have questions between now and then, feel free to email me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Ron, any questions on this budget adjustment discussion?
Two quick ones. Can you hear me?
I think so, I can hear you.
Question one is, is there any guidance yet, like Dr. Summers' question as well, on the 2021 CARES act?
I was about to ask.
I read that off Tiffany's notes.
The new SIR funds?
Any funds coming from the federal government as it relates to K-12, filtering downs from Colorado to us? Any guidance at this juncture? I know it's early.
Is that based on the most recent signature in December 15?
I don't know.
Billion-ish.
Yes, so.
Will it have an impact on this budget?
Well, is there any guidance in terms of what percent of what the state's going to get, we have an opportunity to get?
Yes.
How it's judged and what the timeframe's on. And thank you for being prepared.
I'm learning.
We anticipate it. Well, in that case, we're going to change it up.
So our, so our portion coming to us before the share with Monument Academy, as a portion of this will go to Monument Academy, is about 1.2 million is what we're looking at. Those, and they're calling this the SIR 2, and I will put together a more detailed presentation for the January 25th meeting regarding this, just so that we have, we have that all in a full presentation. These funds can be spent through November, no, I'm sorry, September 30th of 2023. So there is some time to determine best usage. The one difference between SIR 1 and SIR 2 are those non-public school allocation. We do not have to allocate a portion of that to St. Peter this time around for these funds. They have set aside separate funds for non-public schools.
So I think, I appreciate what you just said in answer to Ron's question. And I'm sure there must be similar guidance on to how the funds can be used.
Correct.
Limitations on how they can be used.
Correct, yes.
And that would be helpful in our presentation.
Yes, absolutely, yes. I will lay all of that out. I'm anticipating it to be very similar to the SIR 1 funds.
But I just heard, if I want, I just, I'm going to repeat the date because I want to make sure I haven't heard you. It's actually out in two years, it goes to 23.
Correct.
September, is that what I heard?
September 30th of 2023 is what they have stated at this point. And that 1.2 million, that's a preliminary number, so just hold on to that lightly until we get.
Could it be used to place our reserves that we spent this year?
I will look into that and let you know.
Oh, I wish I was making some notes, I may have missed it. Is there any anticipated date to receive the funds?
I have not seen anything. Have you seen anything come through? Okay, no.
I was again.
In fact, this information just came to me yesterday, so I was scrambling to try to figure all of that out, because I knew it would be a question today.
Right.
And so as soon as I know that, we can, again, let you know.
And if I may, I have a second question to kind of finalize, or I should say reverse of finalizing this. Is it a safe possibility there could be additional funds coming via the federal government to several entities, public and private sector, based on incoming administration? So that's also the TBD that we don't necessarily have to plan for, so we should probably acknowledge that the possibility exists. And then finally, to Mr. Taylor's point with respect to reserves, just another question. We had all agreed past resolution to allocate reserves for these purposes, just in terms of a status check. When we lasted a brief summary of reserves, I think the amount was in the $13 million range.
Correct.
And we had also noted that we want to make sure we always held at least, I think it was close to 6.5 or 6.6 million for every received events, Tabor, et cetera. Do I have that number roughly correct?
I recall the discussion, I don't recall the agreement.
I don't know if it was agreement, but it was a dollar amount that we want to make sure that we.
What the floor is.
Yeah, exactly. Right, it was a round, actually. My point is, if we take that off the top, and we take this off the top, how much is left? So it was 13.5 plus 1.7, takes us to a little under, oh, it's the 11, yeah.
What was the second one you were saying you were taking off the top?
Six and a half.
Oh, gotcha.
So these are around 5 million is my point.
Okay.
Could you repeat that one more time in layman terms?
Yeah, we started out with roughly, these are very rough numbers, 13.5 million dollars in the account.
Of reserves.
Net total reserves. We all discussed that we want to make sure we have a significant rainy day fund, and the Tabor Amendment also requires that we have a small rainy day fund. But given the conservative nature of all of us, we want to make sure that, since we didn't know what was in front of us, that we kept it flexible. And that's what we talked about, six and a half was probably a safe number.
And you, may I just suggest that we ask Shauna to present the details of this question at our regular scheduled board meeting, so it's an analysis of our reserves.
Absolutely.
Given what has gone, that way we can, we'll just have us to share with everyone.
Yeah. Your sense of reserve and part of the reserves.
Yes.
Just reserves.
Yes, I can see that.
Reserve squared.
I will have that prepared for January 25th.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Anything else, Ron?
What?
Tiffany?
No, Ron read my mind and asked questions I had, so.
He's good that way. Teresa, any questions on the budget adjustments?
No further questions, thank you.
Matt?
No, thank you.
Awesome. So I do have one point that's a little off the budget, but it is part of our FPNA presentation. I'm hopeful that we could actually see, if it's not already been updated, on our website, the net ins and outs of enrollment. And Tim Taylor, several years ago, started publishing that regularly. I'd like, I'd like to see that in our next board meeting included in the FPNA section. I don't want to, I don't want an agenda item around it, I just want to make sure that we see, you know, what, did we have a net info or a net outpost students?
And are you wanting that separate from the normal enrollment report that you?
It is a separate, but it's also been posted on your website for a number of years now, and we have some history there. I just want to make sure it's been updated.
Okay.
Talk to Tim if you have any questions about, or about.
Thanks, Chris. I need that, especially given the different conditions this year and enrollment changes, I anticipate there will be a renewal next year, so I think that'd be really informative. Thanks for thinking of it.
Can I, can I ask, are you talking about the ins and outs of where students are going to and from?
And then out of districts.
So for example, the student transfers are here in D-11.
They live here, but they're going to Douglas County, or they're going to D-11, or they live in D-11, they're coming here, it's just the ins and outs. And Tim Taylor has it, I've seen it several times, so I just want to make sure we include it in our FPNA section.
Okay, we're good. Anything else for me?
No, thank you very much.
All right, and you?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did have one more thing, and this is for the board. So I met with Dr. Summers and Shauna in early January, or late December 23rd, just before Christmas. And they gave me a nice gift, just kidding.
I did. Is that a $50,000 discrepancy?
So what we did talk about though, was the preliminary goal number four presentation of, you know, how to figure out where we're at, where we're going, what's the future state want to look like? And I would suggest that most of our time was spent on the current chart of accounts and the segments of those accounts and what they mean. And part of what we'll be doing is we'll be meeting again in January, I'm going to say the 19th, I don't know.
That's correct.
The 19th with Matt, and start talking about, you know, what is our current state, what's the goal, where do we want to end up? I spent most of the time just learning about our chart of accounts so I could understand the capabilities of our reporting system, which is, is very good actually. And so Shauna has agreed that she and team will understand, because the chart of accounts and each of the individual segments and their definitions are given to us by CDE. So we want to make sure we have good alignment with CDE and how we're using it, and then that will make our reporting, she, more efficient, because how we report to CDE, or how we report to a location, or to a job, or to any of those segments, would be consistent with how we report to the CDE. So I was really, it was well informative to me, and so I wanted to just express my appreciation of you and Dr. Summers for that, and then look forward to working with Matt, you all, the plan moving forward.
Indeed.
Thank you, Shauna.
Thank you.
See, number three, superintendent update, Dr. Summers.
Okay, well, I'm going to keep my part of this update fairly brief, and just start with an expression of gratitude, in light of the fact that this, in January, as you may already know, happens to be officially School Board Recognition Month. So we're not going to spend much time today doing anything formal or reflective of our community's appreciation for your service and commitment to our students, our staff, and all of our constituents. But I did want to elevate that at least briefly, wish you all a very happy, healthy, and successful 2021, looking forward to all the work that we have in front of us. And there will be more to come at our January 25th meeting in regards to that School Board Recognition. With that said, really what I'd like to do with the remainder of the time, with your permission, Mr. Taylor and board, is to invite Mr. Frampton, Rick Frampton, who has been functioning admirably and very agile-like, as our, not only our Director of Student Services, exceptional student services, but also our COVID coordinator. I know there's some questions that we spoke to in December related to our plans, and we'd just like to give you an update, allow Mr. Frampton to share some of that information with you all. So with that said, Mr. Frampton, would you like to join us up here? There's also a supporting document that you can find in board docs that will help reinforce some of our key messages. So we're just going to walk through that, ask or answer questions that you have, and go from there.
So Dr. Frampton, I suspect in your wildest dreams, you never imagined the title of COVID. So Dr. Frampton, I suspect in your wildest dreams, you never imagined the title of COVID.
Yeah, I've learned more about virus loading and transmission than I ever cared to know about, so. In fact, I talked to a science in high school back in the day. It might have helped a little bit with this. Thank you so much for the opportunity to chat a little bit. I know there've been a lot of questions. I know I'm receiving a lot of questions from the members asking for clarity and understanding on how we make some of the decisions we make around hybrid, in-person, remote learning and the like. So hopefully, I'm going to try to shed some light on that a little bit for you all this morning. If you look at the document, that's in your notes there labeled COVID information, you'll see that we have a public health order. It's now in its Fourth Amendment that we are required to follow. It's public health order 20-36. If you want to look specifically at the language we're required to follow, it's in Appendix A, which is Section 13, page 40. And there's a link to that document as well. Needs to get some sleep in the evening. I recommend you over that every day. I basically summarized and added some emphasis that we are required to work with the state level health officials and to follow their guidance. It's not a choice that we're making. We are legally obligated to ensure that we are following their guidance. And their guidance is right below that, 418, on our website. If you want to walk in, buy shoes or the shoes that are school nurses, become quite familiar with that document. And the three links within that document I'd like to draw to your attention are the very bottom. So you have to scroll down pages and pages to the very bottom and you'll see links titled, what happens to the contacts? What is or who is a close contact and the return of the learned documents. We're, we're, those are algorithms the state has put together for us that we need to follow closely. We find this extremely helpful in guiding our decision-making law, whether the sentence is home for either isolation, which means that they've been identified as a positive COVID person or they're a close contact, which is a quarantine. So those are all guidelines.
You use the word "we", and when you use the word "we", I'm thinking Los Popper School District. But this guidance in your first sentence says it's for PK through 12th grade, public and private schools. So this is all schools.
That's correct.
This guidance is the same everywhere.
That is correct.
Thank you.
It's correct. One of the things that I learned through this process is this guidance, like any guidance we receive from, from, is open to models of interpretation. And we are working very closely with the health department to get their input on what that interpretation is and then how we quantify that in our community. So that is definitely a big piece.
Could you describe briefly that part of what you do? And that is how do you coordinate with public health? I'm assuming El Paso Public Health is your primary coordination entity. And how have we been able to maintain full-time in-class for all of our elementary? The hybrid model of the fall, that's all. It's not like we're going against the grain. We're just following the guidance to try and deliver to our community as many options as possible, but then practical.
Yep, absolutely. There have been moments in Charlotte this fall where I was on the phone or talked with individuals at the health department, one of my own family members. And it's an ongoing case-by-case conversation. Much of it's clear-cut, but some of it is not. And we are seeking their consultation and their advice. And we are working really hard to combat all of these circumstances and situations with the stay-in-school mentality. I can tell you that we could also approach these same cases with a protect the individual mentality. And I think there's a gap of judgment, in some cases, not all. There are many, many cases in which it's just clear-cut. It is black and white. But one of the examples is in the first bullet area.
Rick, starting, can you speak either a little bit more on the mic? I think our folks are on the microphone.
Okay.
We need some feedback. I don't know if those are also on, but can we just make sure?
It's because we're trying to hear and he just needs to stay still.
So yeah, Rick, just speak directly to the mic just so they can hear everything you're saying.
Yeah. So if you look at the first bullet, where it says, any student within a six-foot radius of a positive individual is considered a close contact. Well, it's six feet for 15 minutes. Well, you know that there's a six-foot, one-inch, or 14-minute case. Those things are happening constantly where there's, those are the, those are the kind of calls that we are having to make decisions upon. So what we're doing is when we have those green areas, we're calling the health department. We're consulting with the health department. And we are absolutely approaching this with the stay-in-school mentality. Is that answered your question? And the judgments, the judgment occurs every day. We're having the big judgment calls around these protocols.
Well, not only did you answer my question, but I just want to express appreciation to Dr. Summers, you and everyone involved. Because what I have observed is that the mentality or the guidance, guiding principle, if you will, is to be in-person and learning to the degree as possible. But you haven't ignored safety. You haven't ignored the public health guidelines whatsoever. You've just tried to do the best possible to give the best education possible for our children during a pandemic. And I commend you. I want you to know that.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Thank you. And here's an example of how we got that just recently. The CDC came up with a opportunity for us to reduce quarantines from 14 days down to 10 days. However, the health department has still very clearly said that the gold standard, is the actual words they used in the conference call we had. The gold standard is the 14 days. And I can tell you on that conference call, many of our peers to the south worked with the 14 days and continued the 14-day quarantine. We made the decision intentionally that we think it's reasonable based on CDC information and health department guidance that moving to a 10-day quarantine is safe for our population. And it's amazing the impact of those four days, especially when it's a teacher who's on quarantine. We're bringing the kids back into a classroom with a teacher four days earlier. And I know that there's some folks that are following that, but we're following the CDC guidelines with that mentality and coming back to school. Just a quick example of what it looks like. We will either get a phone call from the family saying that the child tested positive. We'll get a phone call from the teacher saying that they tested positive. I might get an email or a text from the health department saying we had someone test positive. And we immediately, and this happened, this happened literally every day, especially November, December, maybe four times a week in September, October. We would immediately walk through these protocols where we would evaluate all the students who were within that six-foot radius and was there for more than 15 minutes. And we would quarantine them and send them home for, at the beginning of the year, for 14 days and now for 10 days. Couple of things I want to point out is if the kids were involved in what we call a high-risk activity, which means they were in a P E class, a band class, a music class, or involved in an activity in which the potential spread of COVID is higher, we move that diameter out to 12 feet. So that just increases the number of kids impacted. And another thing I want to point out is if a student is not wearing a mask, either one of the two students within that six-foot radius, okay, goes out to 12 feet. So if I'm not wearing a mask or if I temporarily take it off and we don't have the effect of not wearing the mask effectively, the radius moves from six feet to 12 feet. And the number of kids impacted doubles and oftentimes more than doubles. So the mask is absolutely essential in keeping the number of kids that are quarantined to a maximum. Right now, in our current situation in our secondary, we would typically see an impact of three to 12 students per class for every positive case we've seen. And up to 24 in a school day. So one student coming to school COVID-positive will typically impact somewhere between 12 and 24 students and send them home as well. And many times that would include at least one teacher. And in our secondary schools, we've had a few cases where multiple teachers were sent home or quarantined because of a single student coming to school and that led to one student. One thing I just wanted to point out is if we go to 100% capacity, where we're not hybrid, but we're bringing back 100% kids with 100% capacity, the sum of that would say that would double for every single student with COVID. We would have up to 48 students that we would have to send home. And you know, you do the math, that is a large number that happened quickly.
Is the science consistent with the math in terms of direct proportion?
Actually, I don't think it is. I didn't want to spend too much time getting into those weeds. So I kept the numbers pretty clean just because I think it's easier to understand. But what I'm most concerned about is we bring in higher numbers of kids. We just have less space to occupy. And I suspect that they would actually be a little bit higher than double just because we're the density of kids in the classroom. A quick example is if you were COVID-positive right now, you'd be needing to go out because of the proximity. If this were a full room, we might have two people sitting adjacent to you on this side. And it would actually be three times the number of people that went out versus just double in a full classroom, depending on where the person's sitting or what that impact is. So it could be higher than double, but I didn't, I didn't want to start guessing and exaggerating numbers.
Right. Thank you.
So that's the biggest concern we have is at 100% capacity. The impact of kids who are going to be put under quarantine, which impacts the consistency of learning, is going to be substantial. And it might reach a point where we have so many kids in quarantine and so many staff in quarantine that we may not be able to stay in the in-person learning. And I would hate for us to have to be in-person and then alone, in-person and alone and back and forth. I don't think that's good for the kids. So that's the biggest concern we have at 100% capacity. And the other concern I have, and I know that I have some folks asking if we could just remove any mask requirements. And that doubles the diameter in which we're having to do our contact tracing, which would make these numbers substantially higher. If we had 100% learning with no masks, we could easily go from 48 students for every positive case to 100 students for every positive case in our schools. Well, two or three kids would shut a whole school down if we followed these public health orders. That's what we're concerned with. When we talk about elementary schools, one of the things we have going for us is we're able to keep our elementary school classrooms, those kids together in cohort. So if a student becomes positive in a elementary school, the second-grade class in which they attend is always impacted. And we're able, and we've been very successful in keeping very small pockets of kids insulated with Mamba COVID-positive in school. We have seen many decent of having kids. So it's interesting to watch these little kids come to school feeling just fine, end up testing positive because their family members were positive, and then we're ending up setting the classroom down. So the elementary schools, the fact that these classes stay together and we're able to keep the classroom cohorts together, the entire day is really slow making the spread of COVID in our elementary schools. And I don't see that changing. We were able to keep our elementary schools closed or open to in-person learning through November and December when the county, state members were at their all-time peak. And I want to point out, if you look at the COVID-19 data dashboard for El Paso County, I follow this as closely as I do the sports report. You'll notice that the county hit a peak just around the beginning of December. And I laid the graph of loose baller positive cases next to it, adjacent to it. And you'll see that our trends look very, very similar to the county trends. You'll notice that we haven't dealt with that vertical blue line. That was the last day we were in-person at our secondary level. And because we were in the remote learning secondary, we saw that artificial drop. And I suspect our numbers would have mirrored with the counties very closely, not identically, if we continued with our current programming into December.
Is the data for those Popper School District COVID-positive cases limited to teachers and students?
It's a sum of both.
But no parents, no family?
That is correct.
Just teachers and students?
On the 20th of November, just to help you understand why it was difficult for us to maintain in-person, having learning in the month of December. On the 20th of November, the day before we went into Thanksgiving break, we had 52 positive cases, 43 of which were students, eight were staff members. And we had a total of 986 students on quarantine that day. 893 of them were students. We had 93 staff members on quarantine on the 20th of November. It was, it was the efforts that were made by our principals and our staff to keep schools open on the 20th of November. And that last week of school were enormous. And we were stretched about as far as we could go.
That's primarily secondary schools. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't have it broken down by schools, but I can tell you the elementary schools were taking the same efforts to maintain and stay open. So I would say the impact was pretty universal at that point. And the only reason we were able to keep our doors open is when they have 1,000 students out or just a little less than 1,000 students out of quarantine and on isolation. The impact of having 100, over 100 staff members out is a little bit more manageable if you have 1,000 students who are out. If we had, if we had a hole in the population of students, I don't know if we would have been able to keep our doors open even prior to the Thanksgiving break. So in summary, some things that are going to change that are, that's going to help us continue our in-person learning and maximize our in-person learning is this increased requirement for 14 days of quarantine to 10 is going to be enormous. And we're really excited about the benefits. That change occurred right at the very beginning of December. So we haven't really seen the full impact positively that the 14-day to 10-day quarantine is going to manifest. We already have some of our staff members who have received the vaccine. We have close to 20 of our staff members received the vaccine as of this moment because our health techs and our school nurses are considered quarantining. They've already received the vaccine. As the vaccine continues to increase and we have more and more folks receive the vaccine, we're going to fuel quarantines, fuel positive cases. And that's going to, that's going to be a game changer in our ability to stay in-person. And we have already asked all of our staff, who is interested in the vaccine? They have responded, and we have set that list on this intera health. So the moment we get to 1B, the vaccine, we're hoping that we're in front of the line. So we've already submitted that list. Is there a district legislature with respect to staff taking or not taking the vaccine? So what is it? Well, we're not in a position where we can mandate anybody taking the vaccine. So what we're trying to do is provide that opportunity as well as possible because they get in front of the line. Some of those folks who aren't interested in obtaining that vaccine will have the opportunity to do so as soon as is possible. And I'm not even opposed to getting into the front of the line. I appreciate it, Shabby, and that's what it takes.
I appreciate that proactive advocacy and work to be in the front of the line, to get to be ahead of the game. Do we have any, heard any ideas on dates or timeframe of when we might start to see that roll out?
Yeah, we were in a conference call with a county yesterday where they're saying that 1A is hopefully going to be completed by this Friday, 15th of January. And they're going to immediately start with 1B, where those who are medical providers who have less impact with COVID, firefighters, EMTs, miss officers, and those of over 70 are going to be prioritized on 1B. And they're anticipating by the end of February, teachers will begin to receive their vaccines. I'm using the analogy as like waiting for a table at a restaurant. And you just don't know how fast the folks in front of you are going to be eating and paying their bill and getting up and moving. There are many variables that will drive that. Access to vaccine is one of them. Access the vaccine is one of them. Distribution of vaccine is another. And we're hoping that a few other of these vaccines get approved and there's just higher volume of vaccines coming in, which could accelerate that. The March 1st date for teachers attending the vaccine is based on the assumption that we're going to continue with the two vaccines that have already been approved. If we get a third or fourth, which apparently might be enormous, that could accelerate that actually. Two other things that I know I'm talking a lot here. The community transmission results, those graphs are essential for guiding our practices. If the community continues to have low transmission, it's going to help us have low transmission in school, in quarantine, in our ability to stay in-person. So that, the fact that we are, what's happening in the county just leads me to reiterate the fact that if we want our schools to be a priority in staying in-person, we need, every single one of us needs to do all we can to reduce that transmission in our community.
Can you give us just a brief summary of how far the rear of those transmission rates are?
I don't see them. I don't. I think your assumption is correct, that there is a delay in those reporting. You know, there's a delay of a couple of days from the day of tests, just that is a natural gap. So I don't know exactly what that delay is, but I can tell you our numbers are real time. So we're posting our numbers on our website there in real time. And when you look at those graphs, it's uncanny how closely they near each other. So it can't be too far.
But Ron, having gone through this experience, my wife was ill on a Friday. By Sunday, I was beginning to feel ill. Monday, we went, we're tested. Two days later, we were notified that we were both positive. And then there was a follow-up call a week later from the county health. They had all the dates, right? They knew exactly what our experience was. And they did that verbally by calling us. So they're monitoring this for certain. How real time it is, I don't know the answer to that particular question. But they knew the dates, and I don't know how they put it into the graphs, but they knew our dates of when we think we first became ill, when we were tested. And they then also warned us about, you know, for 10 days, you need to be in isolation, which we did. But I don't know how the data they collected from us is reported. But I know they do follow up, they're pretty thorough. Where I'm going with this is...
Where I'm going with this is a couple of places. One is, it's very disruptive to go hybrid, remote, hybrid, remote, hybrid, remote, back and forth. And so it's quite hard. The district has successfully navigated it to this point. So kudos to the team for doing that and for keeping our kids in a classroom in front of their teachers likely as much or more than almost any other district in the state. So that's good because we all would like them there 100% of the time. So they can get back to traditional learning environments, but we don't necessarily control that in this district. So if we're making the best of a challenging situation, congratulations. Appreciate that thinking. Yeah, our nursing team has taken this hell on and has done a tremendous job. So I can't tell you how competent and professional they are in their judgment-making, decision-making in this process is exceptional. So if you see any of our nurses, make sure you thank them personally because they're going way over beyond. Prior to the break, I don't think there was a single weekend in which they had both days off because we're dealing with this on Saturdays and Sundays.
I'll just add that nurses from Palm Ridge called our home to check on our kids during the same time. So everyone is monitoring this real time.
Yep, it's been a huge honor. We're very fortunate. And I have yet to hear complaints, so they're doing so. They're doing so with an attitude of professionalism that you can't expect from all of our staffs. The last piece of information that you might have heard in the news is the governor has indicated that they're going to make these quick, these quick tests. They're called a antigen, Binax antigen test available for teachers. The state's going to pay for the first month of tests available. They're a 15-minute rapid test. And we signed up for that and opted into that immediately. We were on a call, Dr. Summers and I were on a call early last week, and we opted in a few minutes of completion of that call. So we have opted into that. We are waiting for these tests to come in from out of state. And our plan to use those tests really is to minimize the number of unnecessary quarantines that might occur. So there are times where, I was telling you, we have that judgment that's six foot 15 minutes, and it's on the edge. We're hoping that we can utilize these tests to bring the kids and staff back who didn't need originally go out. But we might have been sending them prior to, because we just wanted to be more safe with those kids on the bubble. And we're hoping that we can handle those kids' families, the opportunity to do some rapid tests, that we can do a better job in our judgment of who's quarantined and who isn't.
I have a question on that. So those, how many rapid tests do we, would we be allocated or is that not enough?
We put in a number that's consistent with the number of our staff. So we included mine and Academy staff and all of our staff. That total number, I believe, is at 900. Within a box, it sounds like there are six tests per box. So let's do a quick math on that, 5,400.
So those tests are for staff?
We intend to use them for staff and in situations where it warrants. Potentially also allocate those to students. That's just the first supply that we're giving. So we can allocate that to both. We're not envisioning giving every staff member a kit necessarily that says, here's your six tests that you're going to get. We're going to basically hold on to those until the situation warrants. And you can talk about that. Yeah, we'll be working with our school nurses to help assess whether those tests would be most beneficial to apply. And I know our nurses are going to use that to have drive, some decision-making around quarantine, close contacts. I also do believe that we need to focus on our secondary schools because the risk is greater there for our staff. They're seeing so many more kids, the kids are growing. It's a much more challenging environment. So I anticipate we will be focusing maybe those tests in the secondary. Holding some back for our elementary. There's a concern or any circumstance will apply there as well. So it's not going to be exclusively for one place. So we'll use our best judgment to determine where they must be to do that.
So I have a follow-up question with that. Trying to find a way to ask. We, will we be more, are we going to be collaborating and communicating with parents? Should there be a need to test a freshman that we are contacting mom and dad or guardian and saying, hey, do you want to be present? Do you mind? Do you give permission? That's the question.
Of course.
Because we're going to ask.
We will not be administering a test to any student without parent permission.
That's...
Absolutely, absolutely. And most likely, the way that these tests will work is we would send the test home with the child so they can live at home. And one of the things that makes these tests as pricey as they are is these tests need to be administered in a real time to a caller, a medical professional. So the medical professional locks through how to take the test, how to apply the different steps to obtain the results, and then they interpret the results for you. So we will not be providing these tests to individuals without that guidance from COVID. The other component for us is if we look at this first shipment and supply as assessing how it's working and what value we're experiencing from that, we then will have a decision to make whether we want to continue to procure additional tests, keeping in mind that the cost of these is about $10 per test or $6 per box. So as we know, we do not necessarily have a budget that we have currently identified setting aside. So we're going into this with optimism, I think it's fair to say, but also a conservative view on how we're applying those, when we're applying those, as well as the need for future additional tests that we may end up purchasing down the road. So we can keep you informed on that as well.
So hopefully offset my additional federal funding that's going to...
Potentially.
Right. Anything else, Tiffany?
No, I, thank you. That's the question I was asking, is will we have parent permission?
Absolutely.
I appreciate your sensitivity, though. The way you ask your questions.
Yep.
For sure. Teresa, any questions?
My only clarification is, is it limited to the rapid test for school districts to opt in with the state program? Or are they, is it, I guess that's it. Is it just a rapid test that will be available?
There are other options that could be available for us to consider. Teresa, the easiest answer to that is again, due to cost and the fact that we believe that we're also getting, the testing approach that the county has that we are currently accessing, we still feel like is yielding good results. So for us right now, we do not envision going beyond this current testing approach that we've described. But yes, the fact they are rapid tests compared to what the community-based testing is, which are PCR tests, would tell us at least right now that we would continue to just only do the rapid tests onsite, if you will, versus not bringing the PCR tests to our schools. I hope that answered it.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I know that clarifies something.
One thing that's important about is the PCR test that Dr. Summers was referring to is considerably more accurate than this rapid test. So that's one of the cautions that we've been given by the health department is that we have to take into consideration that these rapid tests are not as accurate. They tend to lead to false negatives at a higher rate. And that's why we would send multiple tests so they can get consistent testing results over the course of time.
Anything else, Teresa?
No, I guess that was my concern that we just spoke to you, but it's just cost benefit, given the rapid tests with less accuracy. And I'm also coming from a background of having a college to the West Coast whose university has vending machines available. And they're keeping things open because there is such access to being able to be tested. So, and I know that's different for kids or twelve, but I have to give you the staff and employees here, and if there's anything else we might be able to consider.
Good. With respect to costs, I've got to think that the next set of care spots, this will certainly be applicable, I expect. So it's likely more a function of cash flow than physical question of cost.
Indeed, I just want to make sure that we're making an informed and apt decision. So I think what we're very interested to see is what the impact of these tests that we're getting in this initial round will be before we make any decisions.
Yeah.
Great.
The cost benefit, I think, is important to look at. I personally, my own personal anecdote experiences, when I was feeling ill, they did a flu test, came back negative, did the rapid test, came back negative. But to back up that rapid test because of the possibility of a false negative, we backed it up with the other test as well, which also came back negative. But there was, they did it twice just to make sure, to be efficient.
Matt, did you have any questions?
I did not, great.
All right. Again, we commend you for what, without testing, without information. You had to start from scratch nine months to get vaccines here. A little longer, it looks like for tests. I'm grateful that we've survived as well as we have. Just commendation to you, Dr. Summers, and everybody that's helped you, the nurses and everyone. It's a remarkable achievement.
We really appreciate that. Mr. Taylor, I can just add one more thing. And Mr. Frampton, thank you for your in-depth and insightful analysis. As you all know, we made a significant shift over the break into synchronous learning expectations for middle and high school students. I also want to just briefly commend the work of all of our teachers, our staff, as well as Dr. Ben and her team in that lift to get everybody supported to be able to roll that out. Our kids are experiencing that as of yesterday and today. Obviously, that's an effort that we believe is one step closer to fully getting back to what it will look like when we're all in-person. But that big of a shift involved several hours, days of preparation and training. And the other thing I would just call out is the appreciation that I've heard from numerous staff for the additional benefit of time around planning and preparing for this return of students this week. So with all that said, again, just extending my gratitude to the entire team and our entire community because we're doing it together. And we're working through this, and I think we'll be stronger than we're told.
Thank you. Did you have any other comments?
That comes my own way.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So Matt, would you like to start board member comments today?
Yeah, I think we don't have any comments other than just thanking K C and his team and our teachers for getting their kids back in school. And I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Matt. Teresa?
My only comment is, too wish everybody a happy new year. And I think we can look forward to this year with a lot of optimism. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron?
I echo Mr. Clausen's comments very well said.
Thank you. Tiffany?
I appreciate tremendously the amount of time and effort and people wearing, in our district, wearing hats that they never had to wear before and navigating this to ensure that consistency is key with our kids. And so doing the best we can to give them as much consistency in their education journey and the model for our staff. And the tremendous amount of work that our staff is putting into ensuring that their students are receiving as much consistency in their instruction is commendable. I very much appreciate that. The CDE has a website that you can, on the CDE's website, there's a link to see what each individual school district is doing. And you'll find that school districts with student populations in the secondary level that are similar to ours. I cannot express the pride I have in D38 in the leadership and the team and the teachers and the resiliency of students, staff, parents in our community. And there's things we can do in our community to be supportive. You can sign up to be a substitute. We can donate supplies to classroom teachers, donate cancer. There's certainly ways, writing a teacher a thank you letter. There's a myriad of ways that we as a community can continue to show our support. So that's all I have to say is I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tiffany. You know, I have a couple of kids that go to Palm Ridge High School. The change from hybrid in the fall to, I wouldn't necessarily call it hybrid now. I'd call it synchronous hybrid, which is quite different. I mean, it's night and day. And I would actually describe that we didn't go back to hybrid. We went forward to synchronous hybrid. And the only difference is where you're sitting because you're in class in communication with your teacher more frequently, and it's better. And I would have to suggest, in my mind and my perception, is we're one step away from in-class learned. So the item, Dr. Summers, we've seen what the teachers are implementing firsthand. It's so much better than the fall. I just can't say that enough. My kids yesterday was like, well, this is like school again, right? Their fault, but it's now like school again. I suspect a lot of their parents and students are feeling the same thing, I hope. And I hope they recognize that this is an advancement, not just a return to hybrid learning because it is truly an advancement. I've already seen the difference in my children one day. And I suspect by the end of the week, I'll have a better feel for the change that has occurred. And I know that these teachers have put a lot of effort into making this happen along with the administration. I couldn't be, like Tiffany said, I couldn't be more proud to live here and to be a part of... I couldn't be, like Tiffany said, I couldn't be more proud to live here and to be a part of the school system and what you're doing during this pandemic. It's been, there's no roadmap. You've had to define it almost every week as new information keep coming. And I feel like we have a roadmap now more than we've had in nine months. The fear factor for March of last year has dissipated. We know now that sadly, 80% of those who die are over 65. And reflective of my age, I know people who have died from this. And it's sad. It's heart-wrenching. And to have experienced it itself is difficult. And yet I finally got through it, and I'm glad I didn't go to the hospital, I didn't die. But it isn't, it isn't a flu, it's a virus that had symptoms that I've never experienced. The fatigue associated with it is like depression. You just don't have any drive whatsoever. It just takes it out. It's at you, or it did me. They say it hits everybody differently, but the pain of headaches, body aches, and the fatigue is what I experienced the most of. I don't wish that on anyone. I don't care what age you are, I don't wish that on anyone. This little virus found its way in my home on the Palmer Divide. It's found its way in my brother's neighbor's home, who was a good friend of mine. And they, he lost his wife. And I could go on with other stories. This is a pandemic. The deaths are real. This isn't something to be ignored, and I'm just flabbergasted, and I stand amazed at the job that the school district area has done, not just in the last week, but for the last year. It's been an amazing Herculean type of performance. I'm glad that I was able to witness it from a position that I've been able to witness it from, and I just express gratitude. So with that, I think we'll stand adjourned until January 25th at 6:00 PM at our regular board meeting. Thank you.